Yes, Simone.
We'll go ahead and call the Thursday, September 11th, 2025 Agenda Session to Order. I'd like to welcome everyone here. And just as Madam Clerk is a point of reference, Vice Chairman Jones is attending virtually, and she is connected now. At this time, I'll go ahead and ask for Commissioner Adams to provide the invocation and pledge allegiance.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, I'm good, I'm good.
Dear Heavenly Father, we first want to say thank you. Thank you for giving us our health and our strength today. Father, we ask you, and thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us. We thank you for all of those that are gathered here today. We ask you to continue to bless us. Bless the citizens of Cumberland County and our employees and staff. Father, we know that you lead the way, and we will follow and do everything in excellence in your name. Father, we ask you to bless this nation, bless this state, bless Cumberland County as we move forward during the people's business. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Commissioners and staff, before we begin today, I wanted to take a moment to remember September 11th, 2001, that we honor the lives lost, the brave first responders who ran toward danger, and all those who have served our nation in the years since. Their sacrifice and courage will never be forgotten. I'd ask you now, please join me in a moment of silence and remembrance. Thank you, thank you, dog. Go ahead and move to Item 1, Approval of the Agenda. County Manager, are there any changes or updates to the agenda?
Yes, Chairman DeVere, there's one change. We will not need a closed session today for either Item A or Item B.
Any other changes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Faircliff.
Mr. Chair, I would move for approval of the agenda at this time, for a second.
We've got a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the change of no closed session. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand or say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and move forward to Item 2, Presentation, Soil and Waters, Presentations A, Soil and Water Stream Debris Removal Update. County Manager Greer.
Yes, I will turn this over to Mitch Miller, Soil and Water Conservation, to give us an update on the efforts and initiatives of the Soil and Water Department. Come on in.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. Thank y'all for having me today. I'm really excited about this. I'm glad that we get a chance to show what we're doing as a whole. And I guess I didn't use this, I'm sorry. But yeah, I'm really excited about this opportunity to speak to you all today. So I want to start by saying the reason we are doing what we're doing is because we're trying to mitigate flood hazards in the county throughout Cumberland County. And so, but I feel like the first step would be to understand the watersheds that are in Cumberland County. And so, this past year, we've been working really hard to understand and gain a better understanding of the watersheds in Cumberland County. And so we've found that we have 35 HUC-12 watersheds. HUC stands for Hydrologic Unit Code watersheds. And 34 of those watersheds are actually in the Cape Fear River Basin. So a lot of people would probably think, oh, everything is in Cumberland County, everything drains, drains into Cape Fear. But there are still, there's one watershed that actually drains into the PD River Basin in the lumber. So did some more research and found that Cumberland County is approximately 658 square miles. And looking at those numbers, 98% of watersheds in Cumberland County all drain into Cape Fear River. However, there are still 2% that drain into the PD River Basin. Let's see. Oh, it's just a little lag, I'm sorry. All right. So talking about streams in Cumberland County, we basically, and also in some research that we were doing, we got about 4.6 million linear feet of streams in our county. Some of these streams are actually mapped, while others are not mapped. And we find this out sometimes when we're, we get a phone call from a resident that's talking about drainage issues. We get that a lot in our office. We always get calls, and we try to be attentive to whatever their needs are. And so sometimes, like we did the Town of Linden project, kind of tag teaming what emergency management did with the project previously. And so we were able to work with the Town of Linden and kind of do some good work there. But most of our phone, our issues start with a phone call from, from the public. And so we try to be very attentive of that. So I'll wait for this screen to get called up here. I think it's going to take a minute.
The water back there.
What's that?
The water back there, that's what it is.
That's what it is, that's what it is. That's right, that's right. That's a good point. I love tech, I'll tell you, sometimes I can't even read the word. But thank God for us, eh, Brad? All right, so moving around a little. I did want to show this picture on the left because this is actually one I took on the South River right before Hurricane Florence. And so it was, it was a mess. And it was a rough day, a lot, a lot of debris in the channel. And so this is the kind of work that we start with a lot of times with the stream debris removal. And then we end up in the picture on the right. And a lot of people don't see this, they don't get a chance to see this for you. That's why we try to take good photos and try to share it. And you know, PIO does a really good job of helping us get this out there. There are, stream flow rehabilitation is really crucial to the waterways of our county. And our goal is to, to remove that vegetative debris and get our stream flow in much better. Currently, we have two programs that we're working with that help with stream debris removal. The first one is STRAP, which is the Stream Flow Rehabilitation Assistance Program. This is state funded that they give us. And, and we'll talk about figures in a moment, but that money comes in and we can use 100% of that money towards the stream debris work in, in the county. But it's state funded. Then we also have, and y'all are very familiar with this because recently y'all, y'all gave, y'all helped us with the emergency watershed with Tropical Storm Debbie. And we have the Emergency Watershed Protection Program. That's federally funded. They currently fund 75%, and then the county has to match, or we have to get a grant to get the other 25%. All right, here we go. We also, in the EWP program, this was a project actually we did in the Town of Wade. On the left, you have a, this is the before condition, where we took our truck, they put it there as a marker, but we took our drone, stand it up. You can see where the truck is, and you can see that there's an obvious erosion concern on that side slope. And then what we do with EWP is use that funding to be able to do a stream bank stabilization. All this is, is filter cloth that drips down the side slope, and then they put like different sizes of riprap up the side slope to ensure that it's stabilized. And you can see there we are in the photos there. Now, we'll say this picture was taken right after this happened, this, this was stabilized. And so you can see where it's very bare, but now it's already vegetated, it looks really well. So if y'all are going through Wade, and you go down 301, and you look to your left past Smithfield Road, you'll see what I'm talking about. So stream debris removal projects from 2018 to 2025, we've actually, in Cumberland Soil and Water, cleaned out about 181,000 linear feet of, of streams, creeks, and rivers. In addition to the, in 2024, we did the stream bank stabilization project in the Town of Wade. Now, putting that number to the number we talked about a while ago, 181,000 to 4.6 million, we've got a lot of work to do. That's only 3.8% of the work that we, the canal is clean in Cumberland. But we do have a plan. So I just want y'all to realize that Cumberland Soil and Water is ready to go. And we'll talk about that more in a minute, too. Just so you know, this is kind of the color coded stuff here. The blue is completed EWP, so that was from Tropical, from Hurricane Florence. The green is completed STRAP work, so that's Harrison Creek, part of Beaver Dam Creek. There's some other sites around. There's the Town of Wade Canal up there. And then there's, that one here is, I think, Rockfish, a tributary into Rockfish Creek. So as you can see, we try to keep it around the county. We don't just want to focus on one area, we want to be very diverse and get everybody included. So just talking about the money that we have brought in since 2018, and although Hurricane Matthew was 2016, it took, you know how it takes a little time to get the money out? But we brought in about a half of a million in 2018 from Hurricane Matthew. We also brought in, in 2019, Hurricane Florence, we brought in 1.5 million. Stream flow rehabilitation in 2022, that was our very first STRAP allocation. So I think Hurricane Matthew and Florence kind of started the fire for like trying to get a continuous program for, for stream debris removal. And STRAP was that program. And so the first time we got an allocation of 249,000, so about, about a quarter of a million. And then in 2025, we're down to a tenth of a, of a million. So you see the fund has kind of dwindled down. And in the mountains, you know, they had the Hurricane Helene, so they're getting some funding, too, as well. So our prayers go out to them as what they're going through. But in Tropical Storm Debbie, we did get the 1.6, thanks to you guys, and also thanks to the federal government. I will say a little update on the FATA agreement. And by the way, FA stands for Financial Assistance Agreement, and TA stands for Technical Assistance. But we're waiting on that agreement, it should be here next week. But totally, we've got about 2.38 million that we've previously received, and then 1.64 million currently that we're working with Tropical Storm Debbie. And then our future project goals, we've got these areas in purple here and pink. These are kind of what we're planning for this area here and up here. Those are all going to be our work for EWP this upcoming time with Tropical Storm Debbie. And you've got Beaver Dam Creek down here, the Gum Swamp Canal, and then this is Sandy Creek, we're going to try to focus on. And then there's one little tributary over near Rockfish Creek we want to try to tackle again. So we've got a lot of works, work that we've got planned around the county. So y'all know, we're, we're trying to work hard to get it, taking care of. So almost done here. We've got about 4.4 million dollars that we've received totally for stream debris. I think that's, you know, a big number for us. We've worked really hard to get this number. And so, like I said, we thank y'all for your support in that. This is kind of an overview of what we've done and what we're planning to do. So what are our future goals? Our future goals, we need to continue to listen to the needs of the public. That's our goal. We want to make sure we're meeting their needs. We also want to map and gain a better understanding of Cumberland County waterways, and then, of course, be ready to ask for funding. So in other words, our maps and evidence need to be ready to go for when they say, all right, we're going to release some funds. We want you to be able to get what you need. And then last but not least, we're going to continue to apply for federal and state funding for resources to assist in our, our district in accomplishing our goals. Last but not least, I just want to thank y'all for letting me speak to y'all today. Thank you for the funding that you provided us after Tropical Storm Debbie. And also thank you for the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners and for Cumberland Soil and Water Board for your continued support. Do y'all have any questions for me?
Thank you. And before we move to questions, just want to recognize the Soil and Water Board members that are here, if you'll stand. Thank you for being here, appreciate y'all and everything that you do. Commissioners, questions or comments on the presentation? Commissioner Adams?
Not necessarily the presentation, because I may have, I got a question maybe for staff, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
So we did get a million dollars dealing with the Methodist and doing the cleanup around Methodist. Where are we at on that?
I have to bring that back to you, but where, the last time I checked, the most recent, we were approximately 65% complete. We're about 65% complete.
I think she was updating.
I just said, that wasn't his form.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. But we're 60, about 65% complete with the Methodist stream.
Okay, because I, you know, at some point, the state's going to ask us what we did because it's been sitting there for a while. And I know, I know, Mr. Chairman, that's why I'm asking the question. So that we are in compliance with that. Thank you so much.
County Manager, do you have something else?
No, I'm getting feedback from some supervisors.
We have had some reporting recently with the Methodist Stream Renewal Project. And last time I spoke with the person at Methodist who's in charge of that, they were pretty, they were getting pretty close to being finished. They had some planning and things that they were holding off for the right time of year, which I believe is the fall. But it sounded like they were very, very close.
You know, I just think that at some point, when we finish, we need to send a letter back to the state that we did it, we completed it, and it was done as they did if we ever get any more. So I think sometime you let them know when it's completed. Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else to add on that? I'm sure there's a reporting mechanism that goes, that will hopefully go back to the state, but that's a good point.
There is.
Yeah, there is, I'm sure, tied to the funding. Commissioner Tyson, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Miller, thank you for what you and your team do. And thank you to the Soil and Water Conservation Board for their efforts. We know that we're right in the middle of peak hurricane season. Talk to us a little bit about the stream rehabilitation program, just so people, people are interested, you know, kind of the process of how y'all identify these areas and everything, just so we can have that.
Absolutely. So a lot of times, we start with a phone call, people contact us. And I think as a staff, you know, we've got a good team that we can actually go out and we know where some of these creeks are. We actually really start a lot of times with those blue line canals that we see on the map, because we have GIs, we have Arc Pro that we use to try to help us make these decisions of where we need to focus on. And also, we have to run tools, and we have to figure out how many residents are in those areas. Because when the state gives the funding, they're looking at like, how many people are you impacting? We're also looking at the number of structures that we actually are dealing with, like how many roads they're crossing, how many utilities crossings are there. There, there's just a lot of that stuff that's going on behind the scenes, too, that we have to upload into the application process. And we do that, the, the application process is usually passed down from the state. So once the state receives the funding from the legislature, they then will allocate it to districts. And so the, they try to, the way it works is Soil and Water Conservation Districts apply, municipalities apply, and then Drainage Districts can apply. And so I know in Cumberland County, you know, we've got the Flea Hill Drainage District, and, and you know, I know there's a lot of efforts, work going on there to put that back, I think, where it needs to be. But the, with that going on, all those are good resources to be able to get funding for stream debris removal. And so we're, we're, we're always trying to grab a hold of that money. Whenever it's coming down, we want to make sure we're taking our, taking our opportunity to get it. Because I know, like, last year, I think, other counties like Robinson, they got about one, I think it was 1 million. So you know, we got 200 and, or 122 last year, and I know that ain't a lot, but we're, we're still trying, we're still trying hard.
So if any of our residents have questions or concerns about anything, they can?
They can certainly reach out to us.
Yes, sir.
We want to put in more than we need, you know, or more, a lot more, because they're only going to give us what they give us. And so showing the state we have this certain need, that numbers wise, may give us more money.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Adams, you recognize?
I got, and it may not be you, it might be staff, and I just don't know. The lock and dams, because there was a whole lot of issues with the locks and dams. Where we own the locks and dams, I just have that one and one more question.
You talking about like the fish ladder and things like that?
Those things that were, they were going to give it over, they were going to close it. I don't know where we are. Do you think? Or you can bring it back?
I'm a fisherman, you know, sometimes on the side, too. So I don't make it, you know, nobody makes money doing that. But now, as far as...
What you, what you, some bass?
Oh, I love to catch bass, whatever it is. But like, I do know down at the Lock and Dam Number One, down at Regalwood, they've converted that completely to the fish ladder.
Okay.
Number Two, I'm not familiar with, but I thought, I heard that they had done some of that. But, and then I don't know about Husk yet, I don't know if they've, they've done that. But there's, there's three, and I know the first one, though, is fully converted to the fish ladder.
You have a follow up?
And the last question I have, and it may not be, I don't even know if we, maybe, Little River floods all the time. Is there anything we can do in advance of, or, I mean, it just, it is good, hard rain, it might flood. But I don't know if there's anything in terms of talking to the state or anybody about what happens with Little River, because we've had that on every occasion.
Yes, unfortunately, we monitor every time there's a large rain. Gary Crumpler, our newest Emergency Services, Emergency Management Director, has been looking into that, and will probably bring back a recommendation, first part of 2026, 2026, I'm sorry.
Any other questions or comments on this presentation? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all for having me. Yes, sir, thank you so much.
We will go ahead and move to Item 3, Consideration of Agenda Items. And we'll start with Item A, Transfer of Governance of the FACBB to the TDA, and that's the Fayetteville Area Convention and Visitors Bureau to the Tourism Development Authority.
Yes.
County Manager Greer?
Yes, I turn this over to Rick Morfield, County Attorney. Recently, the FC, FACBB was dissolved, emerged into, for lack of a better term, the TDA. And I'll turn it over to Rick.
And real quick, Attorney Morfield, before we start, just want to recognize Devin Heath is the CEO of Distinctly Fayetteville, otherwise known as CVB, is here with us as well. So, Attorney Morfield.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The FACBB is the legal name of the corporation, but it is now doing business as Distinctly Fayetteville. So they're, they're one and the same. And I've given you in the, in the little short memo, pretty much everything I know about about that corporation. But it was established by the Board of Commissioners in 1997 as a nonprofit to take over the functions of a then-county department that was doing the same thing as the FACBB has since then. There's an issue with the bylaws now, with this, what's happened now, and that's the reason I was researching this. But we, we found where the Board of Commissioners approved the original bylaws, March 17th, 1997, but they were not in the minutes, and neither the clerk nor I could locate them anywhere. So we, the bylaws that we have, the current bylaws were attached, or the, the bylaws that were in place on June the 6th, 2025. And on that date, the Board of Directors of the Corporation, of the FACBB, took action, and it's all set out in the minutes that are, that are attached, to transfer, basically to dissolve themselves and transfer governance of the corporation to the county's Tourism Development Authority to be effective July the 1st, 2025. And they dissolved themselves as of June 30th of, the end of this year. The Articles, Amendment to the Articles of Incorporation and Amendment to the Bylaws that they adopted at that time to do this action are included. And the, and the reason this is before the Board of Commissioners is because the, the current bylaws, and it's been in there for, for a while, there have been some revisions, several revisions to the bylaws, but those were done by the FACBB. And unless they were related to a section of the bylaws that, that was requiring board approval, we didn't see them, and I don't have a record of them. But in any event, there's a little bit of confusion because the bylaws reference the authority, the authority of the Board of Commissioners, point five members of the, of the FACB Board Directors, is in Article Three. But the last section of the current bylaws states that Article Four in the Amendment Section cannot be amended without the approval of the Board of Commissioners. So there's... of the Board of Commissioners, so there's, there's been some disjunction over time in terms of amendments that were made, and we just don't have a record of what it was. But in any event, I, I think it would still be a very good idea for the Board of Commissioners to, to consider and this, this action, because the Board of Commissioners solely appoints the members of the Tourism Development Authority. But that, and this was really something that was discussed between the TDA and the FACV B for several months before this happened, and it has already taken place in terms of from the FACV B's perspective, and it's pretty crucial that this get resolved, because it's really essential that each corporation have a Board of Directors, and it's, right, right now, it's kind of in membo, and the TDA, one of the last actions the TDA took was to extend the contract that they already had with the, or had had with the FACV B that expired in June until September 30th, so comes September 30th, there's no contract, there's no Board of Directors, and so, that's, I'll be glad to answer any questions I can, but the TDA actually engaged another attorney to do this stuff, and I'll, I'm just passing on the documents that were provided to me.
Is there anybody here from the, speak to the TDA if you can't answer the question? Well, I mean, I'm starting, as far as their legal team?
Well, from their legal team, no, no, no.
Okay, all right, Commissioners, I'll open it up for questions. Commissioner Adams, you recognize?
I guess I have one question, this is the first question I have. If the Board of Commissioners created it, how do they dissolve themselves? How do they take action that, that was created by this board?
They didn't dissolve the corporation, they, they removed themselves, they actually substituted the TDA as the Board of Directors in, by, by the articles of the corporation.
Well, I thought...
They didn't dissolve the corporation, they dissolved themselves as the Board of Directors.
Does that make sense?
I'll leave the floor with you, Commissioner Adams, unless there's somebody else that has a question while you're...
Go ahead, while I'm looking, if they got a question, I'm just trying to...
Any other Commissioners, and then we'll yield the floor back to Commissioner Adams.
I can, if you look at the, I don't have a signed version of that, but what was provided me, the First Amendment to the Articles of Incorporation, the only action they took was, it stated in paragraph number five, in each of its subparts, it deleted it in its entirety and replaced as follows, "The directors of the corporation shall be composed of the same directors as those who occupy the Cumberland County Tourism Development Authority Board of Directors." So, that was not a dissolution of the corporation, it was a, just a change in the, in its governance.
Commissioners, I'll entertain any other questions? Commissioner Adams, you find what you're looking for?
I have not found it, Mr. Chairman, it's...
It's the, the attachment of the First Amendment to the Articles, it's the... If you... It's, it's, on my, what I'm looking at, it's one, two, fourth page after my memo.
So, I guess, Mr. Chairman, my question, I guess the, it still exists?
The corporation is still existing, yes.
Okay, and so, what, I guess, so, basically, the corporation that was set up by the Commissioners that had this Board of Directors and everything, the TDA, which wasn't created by the Commissioners, decided that they would become the Board of Directors for the CVB or the Distinctly Fayetteville. How do they do that when it's this board who created, you can't, I don't see how you can change my Board of Directors, or this Board of Directors that created by the Commissioners?
And the TDA has not taken any action with respect to that, this was the Board of Directors of the corporation, and the Board of Directors of a corporation does have the authority to amend the Articles. There is a question about it, because I suspect that the original bylaws for it said that the Board of Commissioners would have to approve this sort of stuff, but some...
We can't find that.
But, but since 1997, it's been apparently changed a few times in what, there's apparently just an incorrect reference in, in the, in the bylaws. And this was, if you, if you remember, Commissioner Adams, you, you brought up a question, the last time you approved something about this, and, and that was just a couple of years ago, it wasn't about, you know, it was about something else, but, yeah, that's...
Follow-up?
So, I guess, I'm just trying to figure out, so, basically, the, the two entities exist, but there is no Board of Directors for the, for Distinctly Fayetteville or the CVB, and the TDA is basically merging and becoming the Board, but they give all the money, too, with the CVB and, and what's called it anyway, so, I don't know how they will answer them back and forth either, but it makes more sense, I was just trying to figure it out, what happens to, so, basically, the TDA is going to kind of be the oversight for the CVB?
If the board approves, it would be the, it would be, even though legally, right now, it is, they're, they're asking for the boards of approval of that.
Commissioner Patel, you recognize?
Thank you, and I, I just want to give a little bit of background on the, the reasoning why, um, the, over the last close, decade plus, the TDA has been funding the CVB pretty much to 95, 99% of their, their budget every year, and one of the inconsistencies, I think, with our tourism market growing, the number of hotels, our occupancy taxes have, you know, grown over the last couple of years, the issue was with actual CVB leadership and the day-to-day operations, the board was, the CVB board was more of the operations board, and the TDA was more of their funding board, and so, unfortunately, I know Mr. Heath had to go through this once or twice, but if there was a change on one board from the budgetary aspect, then he'd have to go back, get it re-approved from his board, and so, it was dragging out a lot of opportunities that we could have taken advantage of, or we, you know, we may lose out on, so this just seems like a better and more streamlined and efficient way to let our CVB do what they do best.
Anything else, Commissioner Patel?
Thank you, sir.
Vice Chairman Jones, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess some of my concerns was the same as Commissioner Adams, or it seems to me then it should just be one board, because if not, like, I don't want to confuse transparency, the community nor myself being confused, if they're going to be working hand-in-hand in one entity, instead of appearing or to be like, one board oversighting the other board, it should all then just be one, instead of two different boards or one, in, in one particular area somewhat overseeing the other board, then are we just merging, is that what they're trying to do? And just have one board? Because I'm, I'm confused here.
Attorney Morfield, if you want to clarify for the Vice Chair?
The TDA, as it's constituted, would become, is the Board of Directors of the, also the Board of Directors of the corporation, and all the TDA members are appointed by the Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners did not appoint all of the members of the old FACV board, so that, that is a big difference also.
So, to clarify, Attorney Morfield, you would have the TDA board, which we appoint, and then they would serve as, as the Board of the nonprofit FACV B, which is doing business as Distinctly Fayetteville?
That's correct, and, and it would still be the board that would be making the appointments to the TDA and thereby the...
Thereby, to the, to the FACV B board, okay. Vice Chairman, other comments or questions?
No.
Okay.
Not at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Fairclough, do you have something? I'm just like, okay. Any other questions or comments, Commissioners? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion, Commissioner Patel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this point, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendments to the FACV B bylaws and Articles of Incorporation, will allow the TDA to become the Board of Directors of the FACV B, and move this item to the September 15, 2025 agenda as an item on the consent agenda.
Second the motion?
We have a motion that's been properly seconded to approve the amendments to the FACV B bylaws and Articles of Incorporation, and move this item to the consent agenda on September 15th. Are there any questions or comments on this motion? Commissioner Adams, you recognize?
And I guess, I'm looking at the, the bottom where the attorney says you still have to have a Board of Directors for the, for the remainder of the corporation?
Yes, because, I mean, it's...
It's that part of the motion, I, I was...
It's the, the bylaws and the articles, and the, the amendments outline that, and the amendments to the bylaws outline it, and the amendments to the Articles of Incorporation do both of the things that the attorney said.
That's correct.
Is that correct, Mr. Attorney? Sorry, I didn't mean to speak for you.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I'll entertain, I'll ask for your vote, please raise your right hand in support or say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Board, we'll go ahead and move to item B, proposed amendment to Rule 20 of the Board's Rules of Procedure. Before we move forward, I would, without objection, I would move this item back to Policy Committee. Hearing no objection, that's so moved, and we'll move it back to the Policy Committee. Moving to item C, Crown Theater and Arena Request for Qualifications and Proposals, County Manager Greer, you recognize?
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioners. One of the things that came out of the Infrastructure Committee a couple of weeks ago, when we discussed the RFQ, you know, it's posed RFP for the Crown Theater and Arena modernization, is that they wanted me to add a few things, and then it was, we also bring forth, come to the, this meeting and ask fellow Commissioners if there are any other additional items. Some of those items that was requested to be added before we published the RFQ, RFP, were to make sure that we had all the documents from the previous market study, proposed more, proposed multipurpose event center market analysis, and then the committee agendas, some of the guiding principles of the previous effort. Then also, we wanted to make sure that the, all the Commissioners were okay with the budget not exceeding $100 million as an additional item, and then lastly, also have a scope of the RFQ, RFP to include modernization and/or renovation of the Crown Theater and Arena as one project, modernization and renovation of Crown Theater and Arena as two separate and distinct projects, with the Crown Theater being the initial phase of the project, and so, the seating, 25 to 3,000 seats, ask for that information for each, or leave it open and allow the, whoever responds to the RFQ, RFP, to provide what they think would be the best recommendation for the facility, or indoor facilities, and I'll take any questions and any guidance from fellow Commissioners at this point.
Commissioners, before we move to comments or questions, I'm doing a lot of recognizing today, I want to recognize our Chair of our Crown Commission, Jamie McLaughlin, who's here with us as well, so thank you for being here, it's important, we show the, you're here participating, thank you for being here. Commissioners, I'll open it up for comments or questions. Commissioner Tyson, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Manager, the, the items that you kind of discussed with the budget and all that, we'll have an opportunity to, to kind of assess that out more as we generate our RFP process, so in this process, we're just getting qualifications from folks that we can look to contract with, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, other questions or comments? Commissioner Adams, you recognize?
Yes, I'm just, just so for, for transparency purposes, I'm not in favor of renovating the Crown or the theater, and at $100 million, it's just not a good use of taxpayers' dollars. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other comments or questions?
I have a comment.
Vice Chairman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I can't be in favor of $100 million, as we know, I was not in favor for it to be down there, I'm going to have to see some other figures and numbers of concerns, I have some concerns to see if, if that can be, again, yes, I agree with Commissioner Adams, for that price for renovations, I'm going to have to not be in favor of that. That's as much as a new Coliseum could have been, so I'm not really comfortable with that type of money for, not for renovations, I'm not, no, I'm not, for the record to state.
Vice Chairman, anything else?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Tyson, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I just want to be clear, Mr. Manager, the project budget, the features that we would look for, that would be done during the RFP process, so we're not setting a budget today, we're just asking for qualifications from providers to look, to partner with us on the design process and this project, is that correct?
Yes, I was just saying that, just recapping what, what we discussed in the Policy Committee meeting, and I just, and it's not to exceed, not that that's the budget, it could be lower by anything.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions or comments, Commissioners? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion, Commissioner Patel, you recognize?
Thank you. Go ahead and like to make a motion that we direct the County Manager to advance an RFQ for the purpose of modernization of the existing Crown Theater and Arena facilities as currently programmed, and that it includes a provision to make the facilities compliant with all applicable codes, laws, ordinances, regulations relating to access for persons with disabilities, to include the Americans with Disabilities Act. The solicitation period for the RFQ should be no less than 30 days total, with updates presented back to the Infrastructure Committee at the next regular scheduled meeting in October.
Second the motion.
There's a motion on the, there's a motion that's been properly seconded to direct the manager to create an RFQ for modernization of the Crown Event, oh, excuse me, the Crown Arena and Crown Theater, to, for modernization and ensure its compliance with ADA. Are there any questions or discussions on that motion? Hearing no questions, I will ask for your vote, all in favor, raise your right hand or say aye.
Voting in favor, Commissioner Tyson, Commissioner Council, Chairman Devier, Commissioner Patel, Commissioner Fairclough. Voting in opposition?
Like sign for an opposition?
I'm opposed.
Voting in opposition, Commissioner Adams and Vice Chairman Jones.
We'll go ahead and move to item D, Gillespie Street Parking Lot and Future Steps.
Yes, good afternoon again, Commissioners. As part of the vacant lot on Gillespie Street, the former parking lot, wanted to find out from Commissioners what items that you would like for me to explore as far as we move forward with that lot, if you want us to explore repaving the lot, using its open space, I've been in discussions with Robert Van Gens with Fayetteville Cumberland EDC regarding some economic development opportunities, one of the things we discuss is we may want to update the hotel survey that was completed a few years ago, and wanted to know if I could have authorization to proceed, or pursue those avenues.
One question before we go to the Commissioners, we're going to receive a formal update on, I know we did a community survey, so we're looking to see that, I'm assuming it's running through next Monday?
Yes, but, yes... Yes, but, yes, through next Monday. Right now, we've received about approximately, I want to say, a little over 1,000 comments.
We'll look forward to the completed survey and those, and the summary of those results as well, and hopefully we can maybe look to do that in the next, when do you think would be a time that we'd be able to see it?
I would, I would say, let us, it goes through the 15th, let us tabulate and then we'll bring it back to the agenda session in, on the night.
In October, okay. Commissioners, open it up for questions or discussion.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Vice Chairman, and then I'll go to Commissioner Adams.
Thank you, Chairman DeViere. My question is, this is for the manager, I'm glad to hear that the surveys, I was very pleased about that, we always like input from our community, so I guess my question in reference to that, and I'm glad that Jamie from the Civic Center Advisory Board Commission is there, so two questions I have, I'm not sure, I know it was open for the public, but I guess my request, I really would like for the Civic, since they are our board, to help with decisions and other areas and whatnot, so I guess I have two requests. I would like for the board members that serve on that particular Civic Commission's Board to be, to receive that particular survey, number one, directly. I know there were some concerns from those board members that they'd like to be engaged and involved, since they are volunteering their time and since it's a related issue, that's one request. And then a request, number two, because I know, since you said you have several surveys that are in, since Economic Development, well, I'm sure be bringing us ideas and suggestions as well, Manager Greer, I would request that perhaps hopefully that your assigned staff would be that of those in the Economic Development, Mr. Ty or someone in that department, because that's all in alignment too, that could review those along with yourself, to review those surveys, to then give a recommendation, but those are my two requests. Economic Development itself, I'm sure Robo will be given input, and so that everything can be in alignment and we can be transparent, just a recommendation suggestion, perhaps that would be a good place, the staff that work in that department, to review those surveys, to give it a summary recommendation. And then I also would request that those surveys, the link be sent directly to the Civic Commission, board members, for them, for those that may or may not have had the opportunity to see it, so that we can definitely engage and use their services for their input.
Well, do Vice Chairman Jones?
Thank you.
Commissioner Adams, you recognize?
You know, Mr. Chairman, one of the things that I believe, if we're going to do a survey and how these people believe that they have some input, that we put off any guidance or anything in discussion on this until we've had an opportunity at least to get the surveys, to see what the citizens at least do that, we can always have our own opinions, but if we sit here and give some guidance as to some of this and doing a survey, if I was going in to do the survey, I'm like, why am I doing a survey if you've already discussed it and decided? So I would ask that we put this off to after the survey is done and we get that, what you just asked for from the manager, in terms of that compilation, and we can all look at that and kind of make some kind of determination, that is, to me, a better process, and I think that has the public have some trust in us to be able to do and listen to our constituents. Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Tyson, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I certainly agree with Commissioner Adams that, you know, it is important for us to listen to our constituents and those that are giving input from this community into this process. One thing that I would like to add as a caveat, if we could go ahead and direct that our Economic Development Partners just look to see if there is opportunity, we don't have to take advantage of that opportunity, but I do know it does take some time to market and to put those feelers out there, and the longer the space just sits there as a dirt lot, the more, you know, uncertainty there is, and also, the longer it's going to take to get that process sorted. So, you know, I agree, we do, before we make a final decision, need to have that input, but I would certainly welcome, if there is opportunity out there, for that to be presented to this board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other comments, Commissioners? I think, so let me see if I can, so we really don't need a motion for this, I think we're looking for a direction, so let me see if I've got consent, and I hear Commissioner Adams' point, but direct County Manager Greer to go ahead and work with our Economic Development Team, both externally and internally, begin to look at Economic Development options or start that process, to include the feasibility study, as well as other options that may be out there, and then to bring back the final survey results to the October 9th Agenda Meeting in a summarized format where your staff will have tabulated those. Is that, is there good consensus, Commissioner Adams?
Yeah, I got consensus, I don't have, the staff, have a problem with staff bringing us any kind of options, not just that, whatever options they have, I mean, we're going to look at the survey and make the decision, but that gives us a leap into where we're going, so, yeah, and so, not just economic, any options that they might want to put on the table, just like I think the survey probably allows the citizens to put anything on the table, even Commissioners, so, yes, I think that's where we are, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. County Manager Greer, does that give you enough direction?
Yes.
And you're clear? All right, we'll go ahead and move forward unless there's any other questions from Commissioners or comments. All right, item E, County Courthouse Parking.
Woo, y'all just don't know. Every day, every day.
Good evening, Commissioners. When we closed down, when we closed down the parking up front, in the front of the courthouse, caused a little bit of a parking vacuum in the community, I mean, for the building. And in looking at it and dealing with the day-to-day phone calls and stops in the hall from individuals, I said we needed a full, not a formal plan, but some type of formal structure for the parking that we currently have. And I'm even going to make a recommendation based on looking at this again, well, not a recommendation, but provide some guidance on where I think we should move forward with the courthouse parking in the back. Right now, we have approximately 414 spaces available in this whole area right here in the back of the courthouse. The Sheriff's Department and Judges park here, and then the pub, and then these spots right here for handicap. We have some spots over here that we have currently county vehicles, but we plan to move those, move those out to a different area to accommodate additional parking for the public and staff. So this first recommend, then we have this lot down here by tire sales and services that's unpaid, but we can use that too when we have overflow. The recommendation up until maybe, I was going to say, the proposal exists, up until maybe 15 minutes before I came to this meeting starting, was that we leave this the same for the Sheriff's Office and Judges and District Attorney and individual staff to park here, initially say make this all county employee parking, make this for law enforcement like State Patrol and jury, and jurors to overflow. We currently have parking here for jurors, but sometimes it would be one and one trial, we need additional parking, and then have this, the green for public, and this space over here, we leased from the church, and former Commissioner Keith, have that for public, but the more I thought about it, I said, one of the things we need to do, the public comes, they don't stay long, so what I'm going to propose we do is take these first two rows here and make those for the public, and then take this, this section right here and make it for staff. Now, staff will have the cows that were displaying their windows, and, but these first two rows will be for the public, will also, will, will have signage and everything for where staff is supposed to park and where the public park. I say this is that I'm not trying to ticket anybody, I'm not trying to tow anybody or anything like that, just trying to find some clarity, so when the public comes in, they know where they can park and have access, and where staff can park and have access. And then any overflow parking, even staff can park over here if they need to. But, whereas things at this time of year gets darker, the security is concerned, the lighting over here, where it's fluent options, and if you've seen in the parking lot, a lot of times, they have these big lights with the solar, they're solar generated, with, we've had a couple of votes for those, we'll probably get two of those and put that in in this side, so we'll light up this parking lot, so if the public here is late, or we have in staff here late, we'll light up that parking lot. Additionally, we're thinking about paving this lot, because if it, if the public uses this lot right here by tire sales and services, on a rainy day, I don't want anybody calling me talking about my car got stuck in the mud and the county needs to tow me out. So, we're, I think we have enough space, parking spaces to accommodate law enforcement, staff, and the public, just think we need to reorient the spaces and delineate who needs to park where, because generally, and I had a picture, I'm not going to pull it up, but we have a lot of illegal parking, a lot of times along the sides, and it's not, it's a safety concern. And recently, we hit the fire, we had a fire panel issue, fire department came, we had so many people parking in an unauthorized spot, and we could not get the fire truck in. So, it's a safety concern, provides an order to the, to the back parking lot until we get additional parking options. One is for, I was working out something with this lot right here, that's right in front of the courthouse, where whoever the owner is, weren't able to get that information, but I'll find out and proceed there. But, where it's blue here, I would say that would be green, the first two, and this would be for employees, and I'll take any questions you may have.
Commissioners, questions on the parking update?
Wait, Mr. Chairman, I give.
Commissioner Adams.
I give every day because I come here. I'm not in agreement with that. I believe that the public should have the book of the space, that they come down here to do business, I don't have any problem, I think staff should have some spots, we created the other lot to create as many spaces as we had out in the front. I asked the, and I don't know if he got a chance, I did ask the manager when this came on to check with Durham and all these other places as to what they do. I can tell you that I talked to the Commissioner in Wade County, Wade County has a, has parking decks, but the employees have to pay $25 a month to park. Very few places all around the state that people are just given parking spaces and all of that, and I guess I would ask, even if we did this, so at the very front where the orange is, where you got the blue, where you talk about the two rows, is that the handicap?
Yeah, these are ADA handicap.
Okay, so, and I've always had an issue that we don't have enough handicap parking spaces out there. This county is, and I'm here and I know the chairman's here a lot, when people come to pay their taxes, in Cumberland County, they come to the courthouse, especially some of the older folk, they're not doing it online, they're not pick, well, they don't want to pay that extra 1% or 2% that you have to do if you do it, so they come here to pay, and I'm seeing them walk up with their walkers from at the back of the parking lot to be able to do all of that, and, you know, I always talk about that, for the staff here, I don't understand how they don't get parking, if this, if it starts at eight o'clock, they here 7:00, 7:30, they don't get a parking space. Now, if they have to leave and come back, or maybe after lunch, but after lunch, this place is usually closed down, I know when I left the second floor today, all the courtrooms on the second floor were gone, so there was nobody on the second floor. And I do think that taxpayers have to have more than just those two spaces up front. I think that the public, registered Ds, clerk, all of this stuff that comes down here to do all of that, just needs more space than the staff. Do have a problem, and I'm glad you looked over at the other part, safety was an issue over there with the lighting, because I know, sometimes when I come out here in the fall and went over there, it was dark, so that, I think, may solve some of that issue. So, if we did a few more spaces for the public, I might be able to go with that, or even if you put the public on the other side, but I just think that the public is, the taxpayers and the public out here, not, not to say that the staff are not taxpayers, because they are too, but I think those that come down here to do some work should have that, that space to be able to do that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
County Manager?
One of the, one of the larger, I don't want to say larger concerns outside of safety, is that we have a lot of employees that work late at night, and work in, at particular times of the year, like finances here, during this time of year, sometime tax, doing, as you say, tax collection time up until five there here. So I, I was trying to make sure that, I tried to address everyone's needs, and like I said, right before I got in, I said, well, we need more spots because for the public, and I was saying these two rows here, if we did additional ADA, we would have to widen some of the spaces, and so that would, that would take away, that was part of the consideration, maybe this first row right here, right here, make some of those ADA accessible. But again, like I said, I was thinking about how can I make it a win-win for everybody, based on the number of spots we have.
Commissioner Adams, you recognize?
So, and I don't know that the ADA has to go back there, where the two hour parking is on the other side where we park, you can make that handicap accessible and it can come in.
When we come through the gate? There's a, there's that parking lot right there that has those spaces.
Yeah, we consider that, we consider that also, and we can still do that too.
County Manager Greer, thank you for bringing this to us. I don't think you need action from board for something that you own and operate on a day-to-day basis, it's your plan, I think our concern is that the public and the employees have access, you're providing a plan that you think will fit, and you'll adjust it as see fit, if you want to incorporate input from the board, that you heard today, I believe that it's yours to execute, unless I hear different from the board, but I don't think this board needs to make, take action on a parking plan. Okay. Commissioner Adams, you recognize?
And I may not, but the worst thing is to walk in here and people telling you, I got parking passes and all of this, I think this board at least ought to know what the plan is before it's executed.
I do believe that, and we had that conversation.
And, and so, to that point, thank you, Commissioner Adams, I believe part of there was an education process that you were going to talk about as well?
Yes, well, we go do a press release, make sure that we give the public adequate time, at the earliest based on where we are right now, I would say, we would try to make sure that we have everything, this lot's for secured, all the spaces delineated and everything, so at the earliest, it would be November, and I would bring back an update, or send an update, but we would do a press release, communicate through the press, send out notifications to all employees, particularly the employees in this building that are affected, make sure we talk with the Judges, District Attorneys, registered Ds, and make sure that everybody was informed well before we implemented anything.
So we'll have a comments plan in place, and then you can just give us an email update on, on any changes or anything on this, or when it's going to go live and any kind of steps. Or are you okay with that, I don't see any action for us to take as a board? All right, hearing none, thank you, County Manager Greer, we'll go ahead and move forward to item F, Request to waive Vaccine and Administration Fee for COVID, Flu, and RSV. County Manager Greer?
Yes, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Jennifer Green, Public Health Director, to discuss, present this item and answer any questions you may have.
Good afternoon, Dr. Green.
Good afternoon, Oki is much taller than I am. Okay, good afternoon, Commissioners, how are you doing? Thank you for having me. This item was presented at the, let me see, committee, the Finance Committee meeting this week, and. meeting, um, this week, and, um, requested to be presented to the full board. Uh, we are presenting this item to request, uh, waiving of our vaccine and administration fee. Uh, let me provide some background on that. Um, each year, we provide COVID, flu, and RSV vaccines to the citizens of Cumberland County. Um, when we set fees for the Health Department, those fees are based off a, a number of factors, including the Medicaid rate, um, our, what our surrounding counties are, are billing, our private practices, uh, third-party rates, and what we, and the cost to administer the vaccine, and the cost to acquire the vaccine. Uh, we've reviewed our fees this year for, uh, flu, COVID, and RSV, um, and we are not changing, we're not requesting to change the fees this year. Um, in past years, uh, after assessment, we occasionally, um, adjust the fees, but we're not requesting, um, that this year. Um, historically, we have waived the fees for flu, COVID, and RSV. Um, the administration, we are proposing to waive the fee for both the cost of the vaccine and the cost to administer the vaccine. So our administration fee is $24, and then the rate, and there's a range of fees for our, for each of those vaccines for flu, COVID, and RSV, um, and those fee, fee costs are different. Um, and so this year, we're able to, um, provide the fees for, uh, the, the fees for our family planning clients and our vaccines for children clients at no cost. Those are already available for free through federally funded programs. Um, what we're really, the folks that, and groups that we're really talking about are, are uninsured and underinsured, um, individuals, and we're requesting to, uh, waive those fees for, uh, for those individuals. Um, all of our other populations that already have health insurance or in, our children under the age of 18, those, or our pregnant women, um, those are already waived, um, those fees are already covered by their federal programs. Um, and so, um, there is some feedback, um, during the, uh, Finance Committee meeting that we bring that back to you all, um, and so we'd like to have some discussion, if it's a pleasure of the board, and I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, for the, for, um, uh, this item.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Anything else to add before we take the questions, County Manager or Dr. Green?
No additional questions.
Uh, all right. Commissioners, I'll open it up, uh, for comments or questions. Commissioner Patel, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Dr. Green, thank you, uh, and thank you for also presenting at the Finance Committee earlier. Um, and I know we spoke about it then, but just for the benefit for the whole board, can you kind of give us a quick recap on the financial, uh, the historicals related to the financials on this program and expenses?
Yes, I can.
And what you're anticipating for this year?
Yes, I can. So, um, last, um, respiratory virus season, we had 50 patients that we waived the fees for, for flu. Um, that was between the cost of the vaccine and the cost of the administration fee, that was approximately $3,000, a little bit more. Um, for RSV, we had two individuals that we waived the fees for, um, and that was a total of $688. And then, uh, for COVID, um, we had 190 individuals that we waived the fees for, um, and that was a total of $37,395. Um, and those three things, uh, items together are a total of $41,263.
Sorry, what was the total number?
Um, so that was, uh, a total of four, $41,263. Um, and then if I could give a little bit of, of context, if, if that's okay with, uh, the chairman, um, this year is gonna be a little bit different in terms of flu, and we, we talked about this, I'm sorry, for COVID, and we talked about this a little bit during Finance Committee. Um, as you've seen in the news, uh, we are still waiting for the, um, one of the advisory councils from the CDC to give final recommendations on the co, on, on the flu, I mean, I'm sorry, on COVID. And so the insurance coverage for that, and it's gonna be different. We're very used to historically, um, having, uh, COVID available for everybody six months and older. Uh, that part is still a little bit in flux. Um, we are anticipating to start COVID, flu, and RSV in October, um, and that will depend on, um, this board, the pleasure of this board, um, but we want to make sure that, um, the insurance landscape is a little bit different, so we want to make sure that there's, uh, broad availability, um, for the public.
County Manager?
Uh, yes, I was, uh, questioning Finance Committee about the amount, dollar amount. Uh, I would make a recommendation that we have $200,000 initially authorized, $100,000 initially for Dr. Green, and then I'll have an additional $100,000 just in case we get, so we won't have to come back to the board, and then we'll provide an update monthly of where we stand and where we moving, and where we, and what the dollar amount is, and then if we have to come back to the board, we'll bring it back, uh, as we approach that dollar amount.
And, and we can certainly provide a monthly, uh, report for your pockets.
Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Adams?
Uh, I just want to applaud you, especially for those that are 65 and older, uh, with the, um, all of the, I ain't gonna say disinformation, but with the CDC in, in disarray, you know, folks don't know where to go. I've, I've read, I've known the, uh, Door and all of these things where they've tried to go to Walmart or CVS and can't get it. And, uh, you know, when you're talking about, uh, uh, those who are the most vulnerable among us, uh, I thank the, uh, manager for increasing those amounts. I don't think there's a dollar amount that we put on the health of our community, so thank you. And we just have to keep looking at whatever that guidance is, don't necessarily agree with all of it, but, uh, that's a whole different question.
And Commissioner Adams, I, you know, I think the two questions I get in the last two weeks have been about, can I, can you give me my vaccine record, and then when are you all gonna do COVID? And so, um, those, that's the question that's flooding our inboxes right now, and, um, we just want to make sure the public knows, we are, we are tracking every meeting that is happening, and as soon as they are available, uh, we have them, we will have flu and COVID, uh, flu and RSV, uh, by the first week in October, and as soon as we are able to order COVID, we will be able to do that.
Commissioner, Commissioner Adams, follow up a minute?
And I do want to just say thank you to the Health Department and their staff. Uh, when these children were going back for their vaccines for school, y'all had the evening hours and everything, and made it, uh, as convenient for people to be able to do that. Thank you all. I, I think sometimes, though, we may want to think about, I don't know if we can do it, uh, of having it in different parts of the county, because it's sometimes difficult to get to the Health Department when you're in Spring Lake, or when you're out in the west, or way, way down in Beaver Dam. So, uh, if, if your board could just kind of look at that and think about, those, those late hours are good, but it's still difficult when you, in these, some of these areas around the county. Thank you.
And we will, we will do, um, we, we actually had our meeting right before this, um, for our, on the back-to-school side of things, we've got four coming up, and, and we'll be in Grace Creek, Spring Lake, Hope Mills, and Douglasford on Monday. Um, and then for our flu clinics, we will have those out in, flu, COVID, and RSV, we'll have those, um, at three senior centers this year. Um, we'll be out in, um, we'll be out in Spring Lake, um, on the east side of town, and then we'll be, um, I'm gonna get myself in trouble, because I'm trying to remember them off the top of my head, um, but we're, we have several planned out throughout the county, and not just at the Health Department, outreach clinics, um, to be able to provide those vaccines.
And I know hopefully the PIO can push that out, because we do them shortly, uh, for everybody to be able to know, so-
That's correct.
Thank you so very much.
Commissioner Faircloth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the reason, uh, this item is on the agenda for the, um, the agenda meeting here, and not the full board meeting, which we thought it was gonna go to, there was a lot of discussion, um, among the Finance Committee about not wanting to have any kind of restriction on, on, uh, any dollar restriction on, on the dissemination of these drugs, because in, in the event of pandemic, or, or just general outbreaks of these highly communicable diseases, we didn't want any red tape, uh, getting in the way of, of distribution. But I, but I, I think that, uh, from what I'm hearing and what the manager has proposed, I, I think, uh, so, some control is, some financial control is good, and I think he's set wide enough parameters that I don't think there's gonna be any problems, so I'm okay with this, the way it is here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman Jones, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Green, uh, thank you and your staff and your team for that of all that you all do. My question is in regards to, um, since we are speaking of vaccines, we definitely want to be mindful for the population, those that are incarcerated in the jails as well, also the juvenile jail. So if you could just, uh, speak a little bit to that, will there be any, um, provisions made to assure that, um, those that are incarcerated in the jail at this particular time are, um, being provided, uh, with these vaccines, especially since they're, you know, no doubt quarantined in smaller spaces in living quarters, and that of the regular detention, and that of, of course, for our youth, the, uh, juvenile detention? Can you, um, give me some information in regards to what we're doing for that particular population that's in jail to make sure they're vaccinated?
Yes, so the, um, Wellpath is the, uh, for the public, the provider at our, um, Cumberland County Detention Center. Um, we work closely with them, I'll have to follow up with them, um, Vice Chairwoman, to see what their plan is, um, this year. It's varied, uh, over the last couple of years, uh, between when and how they provide those vaccines, but we will, uh, follow that, uh, follow that up with you, um, and the same thing for our juvenile detention center. They do have a nurse on staff, uh, but they are not a vaccine provider, so we will follow up with you, um, after I can reach out to those two entities.
Well, thank you, because I would definitely, um, I know that, you know, those are individuals, people have different circumstance situations, but they are too still a part of our community, and no doubt have family that would want to make sure and assure that, um, they are provided, um, with that particular type of needs as well, so let's just make sure that some kind of coordination or collaboration is done to make sure that those that are incarcerated are provided with those humanitarian rights. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman, and good point. Commissioners, uh, any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Entertained motion, Commissioner Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'd like to go ahead at this point, and Dr. Green, thank you to your team, and, and I know this is a lot of work, and, again, public health is, I think, to all of us, a number one priority, public safety-wise. Um, at this point, I'd approve waiving the vaccine administration fee for the COVID, flu, and RSV vaccines for uninsured or underinsured adults, RSV vaccines for adults 60 and older, and place on the consent agenda, uh, of the meeting for September 15, 2025, the Regular Board of Commissioners meeting, with the guidance that the County Manager has given to allow Dr. Green a budget of $100,000, and he can, so, additionally, allow another $100,000 for having to come back to the board.
Second motion? We've got a m- motion, uh, that's been properly seconded to approve the waiving of the vaccine administration fee for COVID, flu, and RSV, uh, for uninsured and underinsured, move it back to the consent agenda on the 15th of September, uh, with an initial authorization of $200,000 with flexibility to bring it back to the board. Any questions or comments on that motion? Hearing none. I'll entertain, uh, I'll ask for your approval. All in favor, raise your right hand or say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you, Dr. Green, and I know you're staying up there for the next item as well. Uh, we'll go ahead and move to item G, proposed changes to the Health Department billing manual for Allen of County residents.
It's Dr. Green.
All right. Thank you again, Commissioners. Uh, this item is, um, also related to billing, um, went to the Finance Committee and asked to present here to the full board. Um, let me give a little bit of background about how we do billing at the Health Department. Um, under North Carolina General Statute, we're able to set fees, uh, for our services, and as you heard in the previous item, uh, we do that, um, via our Medicaid rates, our Medicare rates, the surrounding counties reimbursement, what we can get for those services. Um, we see, receive a variety of different funding sources, uh, for the Health Department and for the services, particularly in maternity and, um, child health. Um, and so we bill insurance, um, and then we also have clients that are, um, self-play, uh, self-pay, um, and we, um, always set our fees at least, um, at the minimum, at the medic, um, Medicaid rate. Um, and then when we have patients that come in that are uninsured, we provide them, from the moment they walk in the door, opportunities to apply for Medicaid if they're eligible, and assistance and support, um, in doing so. Uh, so particularly, the item today is around, um, our maternal and child health, uh, billing. Um, we have a billing manual that we, uh, gets presented to the board, uh, to our Board of Health, and to, uh, this board for review and approval. Um, both our maternity and child health clinics are supported by state, local, and federal funds, um, and then also through, um, self-paid clients, if they are unable to pay, they can pay out of pocket, and then we bill insurance. Um, all of our uninsured clients are seen on a sliding, um, or underinsured on, seen on a sliding fee scale based on their household income size. So currently, in our billing manual, um, it indicates that only Cumberland County residents are able to be seen in those two particular clinics, uh, maternal and child health. Um, this has created some logistical and, um, challenges for our staff, um, and some continuity of care challenges. So for example, if you, um, some of our programs like WIC and immunizations, um, by federal, uh, guidelines and rules, we have to serve regardless of county of residency, um, but, and so if you come to, start with us in immunizations, and they refer you over to child health, um, and you're not an out-of-county resident, or you're just over the county border, we may not be able to serve you. Or if you start with us in maternity, um, and you go to another, um, and then you move just over the county border, you may still be delivering that baby at Cape Fear, but then we're not able to see you, and you may move right in your third trimester. And so, um, what we're requesting is some flexibility, um, so that we can, if people move over the county border, or if they are, um, they are referred to us from another clinic, that there's some flexibility that we'll be able to serve them and maintain that continuity of care, uh, for, for those individuals. Um, so we put together a few numbers for you all, just so you can see, I'll draw your attention to the, um, lines that are in red. So, um, this is, uh, three years of historical data, but I'll draw your attention to the very last column on the right, FY 24, 25, we had 17 individuals in our child health clinic that were served, that were out-of-county residents. Um, across the three FYs, that was 53 individuals. Most of those county, those clients were our resident when they enrolled in care, um, and then they moved over the county border, um, or they moved to a different county. Um, five of those patients were, um, uninsured or self-pay, and they, uh, a sliding fee scale was, um, uh, applied to their, their fees. Um, and then as a note, uh, we do use the North Carolina Debt Setoff Program, um, that we have a policy and a rule around that's allowable under General Statute. Um, in maternity clinic, we actually do not have any county residents and, any out-of-county residents in FY 24, 25, but we did in the prior, uh, two years. Um, and so, um, we, in the prior years, most of those clients initiated with us when they were county residents. Um, very few of those were uninsured, um, just one or two of them, um, and most of them had public or private insurance, um, and which means we can bill for them and then collect that revenue. Um, so we did a little bit of county comparison, I'll draw your attention to some of our, uh, counterparts in other counties. Um, the counties that, um, Durham and Wake County directly provide maternal health services, they also allow out-of-county residents, and they, um, would do what we are also proposing, uh, do this on a sliding fee scale, or bill insurance, uh, for those that they, um, are coming from out-of-county, and then in Wake County, they also provide child health services, and they bill, um, and do services for out-of-county residents on a sliding fee scale. Um, so this, that was, item was taken back to the Policy Committee, uh, I'm sorry, first it was taken to our Board of Health and approved in June, and then taken to the Policy Committee in September, um, with some requests for some feedback and additional recommendations. Uh, so we've taken that back with staff, um, and what we're proposing is to allow, um, three things to revise our billing manual, um, one, to allow 15 months of coverage for a non-county resident, if that patient was a resident when they initiated their services in their, in our two clinics. Um, second, to allow 15 months of coverage for non-residents if that referral from that client, and generated from somewhere else in the Health Department, so immunizations, WIC, and that really allows for our continuity of care for our clients to get all those services in our building. Um, and then to allow children that are in foster care, in our Cumberland County Foster Care System, to continue to re, receive services as long as they are under the supervision of the Department of Social Super, uh, uh, Social Services regardless of their county of residency. So if they're staying with mom or dad in Harton County, uh, but their home base and their, everything else is here, we want them to be able to go to, um, be able to continue their care and have that good continuity of care with their, with their trusted provider. Um, so that's our recommendation. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Commissioners, uh, questions, uh, on this? Uh, hearing none. God- Hearing none. Dr. Green, just a quick question. If you go back to your chart, so we see Medicaid, so under state, no, I'm sorry, go back to your matrix. There you go. One back. So those out-of-county residents that actually come in, we capture dollars from, if they're eligible for Medicaid, so really what we see is a small percentage that we may see from uninsured as well, correct?
That's right. So most of the residents that we are going to, the out-of-county residents that we're going to see, we are, they are insured, and we are capturing that revenue, which is a good thing for us. We want to collect that revenue. That allows us to continue services for our residents. And you're right, there's a few, only a few, five out of the 17 were uninsured, and they were on self-pay on a sliding fee scale.
And so we're going to continue to watch the potential changes to Medicaid and the impact that it's going to have?
Yes, absolutely. And we're going to continue, when folks come in the building, if things change for Medicaid, we're working closely with DSS to understand those and our state partners to understand what those changes are, what that fee schedule is going to look like, and we would bring back any changes that we needed to our fee schedule back to this board.
Is it really, it's almost like what we see at the hospital from a payer mix, kind of?
That's right. Yes, it's, and there is, well, depending on which part of the hospital, but yes, we have a, yeah. And E, it's more, much more similar to the ER, that's right.
Commissioners, other questions or comments? Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Green, for putting this together. One question, and it's kind of germane to this, but it's also kind of a broader question. You know, knowing that we are potentially seeing some changes to the Medicaid program, have y'all begun to do any modeling to see what those potential changes would be, what the implication of that would be, and also, do we kind of know what effect that's going to have here? Have y'all done any assessments?
So we had a meeting a few weeks ago with our Medicaid partners, and they, we expect some fee changes to happen at, beginning October 1st. What that new fee schedule is, we do not have yet. Those changes are going to be somewhere between 3% and 8%. I think there's a few that might be 10%. The bigger impact is going to be to our hospital systems, but we will see some changes in our fee schedule. We're still assessing to see if we need to change our internal fees based on what the Medicaid fee schedule is going to be, but we really need to wait for that. And then we've sort of got a broad framework, but we really want to see the actual line-by-line fee schedule before we make any changes to ours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, other questions or comments for Dr. Green? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Patel.
Thank you, Dr. Green, again. I'd go ahead and like to make a motion to approve the requested changes to the Public Health Billing Manual to include the following. One, allow 15 months of coverage to non-resident of Cumberland County if the patient was a resident when services were initiated in maternal and child health. Two, allow 15 months of coverage to non-residents of Cumberland County as long as the referral to the maternity or child health clinics generated from another Cumberland County Department Clinic. Three, allow children in the Cumberland County Foster Care System to continue to use the maternity and/or child health clinic for as long as they are under the care and supervision of Cumberland County Department of Social Services regardless of their residency. And to add, if we could, if you could provide the board with monitoring data on a quarterly basis.
Yes.
Second, a motion to approve the Health Department's Billing Manual for out-of-county residents as outlined, additionally, monitoring the data and quarterly updates back to this board, so properly seconded. Are there any questions or comments?
I just have one question. Sometimes I'm not, I am paying attention. 15 months. Why 15 months? Why not longer, shorter? I'm just trying to.
We were really thinking about our maternity clients and making sure that they had, through their postpartum care, and that gives them time to, and for our child health clinics too, but to make sure they had time to provide, find a new provider, time to get enrolled in Medicaid if we, if they were eligible or they became eligible, and that postpartum care can be, we have programs that go at least 15 months there, so we wanted to align it with some of our other programs that we had. Yeah, we didn't, yeah, we didn't put that out of the air.
I'm just, it won't be a thing to pull something out of the air.
No, we didn't, yeah.
And just your 15 months, it was a reason.
There was a reason behind that, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
County Manager Greer.
If we see the trend upticking earlier than a quarterly report, we'll provide something quicker than that.
Thank you, County Manager Greer. Any other questions or comments on this motion? Hearing none. I will ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand or say aye.
Aye.
Voting in favor, Commissioner Tyson, Commissioner Council, Chairman DeBiere, Commissioner Patel, Commissioner Adams, Vice Chairwoman Jones voting in opposition. Commissioner Farrakhan.
So this would move to item of business, not consent. We'll go ahead and move to item, actually, board, we are at an hour and a half. I want to be respectful of the members. If we need to take a break, we can do that at this time. If not, we have a couple items left of business. We can continue to move forward unless somebody needs a break.
We can go through the next few things pretty, I just.
I'm just giving the board, giving the board an option. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move forward. Item H, the NCDQ Public Outreach for Natural Gas Alarm Distribution. County Manager Greer, if I can, before we present the item, hopefully the board has reviewed, reviewed it, I know it's gone through a couple committees. Unless there's questions from the board, I think this is a staff action that you are fully capable of determining the appropriate staffing levels for this, and I don't think there's a board action unless there's questions about this that have not been answered at the committee level before this moves to consent. Commissioners, are there any questions on this item? Commissioner Adams?
I don't have any questions, but I think that, because when I read it, these citizens have those kind of questions, if we at least explain what that is. I don't have any problem, we don't need to have a whole presentation, but, and what we're doing, so, because I think inside that, there was some people like, oh, no, I'm not. So if we could just get a short synopsis so that those who watch and know what that is, I think that the staff, I mean, I think it can be done by you, Mr. Chairman, whatever through there, but that we are doing what our role is, is facilitating this meeting for the public to gain more information. I think that's just what I wanted.
That's fine, Commissioner Adams, it's no problem. Ms. Lee, if you'll go ahead and just give us a high-level, one-minute overview. Well, I don't want to put time on mine, but just a high-level overview of what the request is.
Thank you. This is about the Clifdale Pre-Regulatory Landfill. DEQ is undergoing assessment at the Clifdale Landfill, and they have found indications of methane migration. So they are offering citizens free gas monitors, and they are also looking to schedule a public meeting and to, for the public meeting, there would be staff involved such as solid waste, emergency management, and the Health Department.
County Manager Greer, anything to add to that?
Nothing else to add.
So we'll make sure we're, we have a plan to communicate this out to the public?
Yes, we will. We'll develop a comm, communications plan with Amanda and Diane.
We will leave that with you, County Manager Greer, and I'll go ahead and move, thank you, Ms. Lee. Commissioner Adams, is that?
Yeah, I was just, yes, I'm fine. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll go ahead and move to Item Four. Other items, I believe there's two proclamations that we need to move forward. Just for a timeliness standard, or point, we've got one proclamation, and she's walked out of the room. Madam Clerk, I'll go ahead and read it. One proclamation is for the, I don't think it's on the dashboard, y'all all have a copy of it, so you should have a copy of it, the one that, there's two proclamations. One is for the MAN 22 SAR Annual Event to raise awareness for suicide awareness with our veterans. The run will happen on Saturday, which is why the proclamation is coming forward in the agenda session for approval. And then the second one is in front of you as well around recognizing National Voter Registration Ask for any comments on either one of those, or we can group approve them. I'll start with Commissioner Tyson and then Commissioner Adams.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to make a motion that we approve them, so I'll yield to Commissioner Adams.
I'm just, on the one proclamation, why do we have the 18th day of September as opposed to the 11th day, because the other one's the 16th? I think we just, when you approve them, Mr. Tyson, if you just change that, adopt that this 11th day of September as opposed to the 18th day of September.
I think when it was written up, it was written up.
I know, but I mean, it's for the 16th.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams. Madam Clerk, if you'll do that, and I can sign it after this meeting.
And Mr. Chairman, I have a comment.
Commissioner, Vice Chairwoman Jones, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just wanted to be very clear that, yes, the second proclamation that, I guess we're speaking of the one that I was referring to, is actually for Democracy North Carolina, for their, for their agency, for the work that they do for Voters, National Voters Day.
Correct. That's the hereby recognized Democracy North Carolina and proclaim September 16th as the National Voter Registration Day.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I know that they have someone from their organization coming on Monday to receive it, and I wanted to just be clear on that. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Tyson, I'll entertain that motion now unless there's other comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion that we approve both of these board proclamations at this meeting today and give you the chairman and the authority to sign them with the change of the National Voter Registration Day proclamation, the date being changed from the 18th to the 11th.
We have a motion that's been seconded to approve both of the proclamations as presented. Any questions or comments on that motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand or say aye.
I'm sorry, I have one question.
Go ahead.
My apologies.
Go ahead, Vice Chairwoman.
Since, is there any way, since they're getting it presented on Monday the 15th, actual National Voters Registration Date is the 16th, so can the, can the date of the proclamation be that of the actual date of the National Voters Day? National Voters Registration Date is the 16th, although they'll be presenting it on, you know, receiving it on our Monday's meeting, I just want to know if the reflection of the date could be that of, to be in alignment with the actual date of National Registration Voters Day. I mean, I don't know if that's possible.
It's referenced in the proclamation itself. The day that it's adopted is the day that I sign it.
You all can tell, you have one of the weather. Okay, that's fine.
Okay. And we can address it with the clerk afterwards as well. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. Raise your right hand or say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
And we'll go ahead and move to Item Five, Monthly Reports. County Manager Greer.
Yes, I wanted to find out if any commissioners, any questions with the financial report?
Commissioners, any questions on the financial report?
Were there any questions on the health insurance update? If none, then I'll move to the grant report and find out if there are any questions from commissioners regarding the grant report. And lastly, if there are any questions on that, we have a capital improvement project report.
County Manager Greer, hold on, we've got a question on the grant report. Commissioner Tyson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know we had an opportunity to look at this at our meeting with the Finance Committee, but I know we didn't have our grants application staff writer person, Lisa James. Sorry, I don't know your official title. But we had, we had kind of talked about the Public Humanities, Humanities Project, excuse me, and I know that our ACM had kind of briefed us. Can you tell us kind of a timeline of when that'll be approved and kind of a project? Give us a synopsis of that.
Sure, I'd love to. So we completed and submitted our application actually on Tuesday, and it is for a planning grant, $75,000 in partnership with ASOM, 82nd Museum, FSU, FTCC, who's where our scholars, we're required to have scholars involved in that, in the title is Stories of Valor in Defense of Freedom, From Combat to the Home Front, Fort Bragg, World War I to Present, and I can say that again if I need to, I know it's a long title. So what we're doing with that project is, we're looking at a one-year timeline. The grants are going to be awarded next April. We hope to start this project, we're identifying our timeline as May 1st. We would take a year to do the planning grant, which takes us to April 30th of '27, which lines us up to then apply for implementation grant. Now, this is only $75,000, seems low, but the implementation grant is for $750,000. So this will give us a year to plan our project, and our partners are very excited with us. It's going to be a great exhibit, it's going to be a traveling exhibit, and also a stationary exhibit at the ASOM.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions on the grants report? County Manager, I'll turn it back over to you.
Yes, and during, during last month's work session, I mean, agenda session, we talked about the capital improvement, project update. We formulated the report, but we also have a dashboard, and we wanted to show you all the dashboard that would be internal and external facing, probably later part of October.
Great.
I'll turn it over to Faith Phillips, Assistant County Manager.
Absolutely, thank you, County Manager Greer. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Just really briefly, wanted to show you an overview of a dashboard that we have been working with ITS on for our CIP projects, and in conjunction with Amanda Lee and her team. What you will see here is a very basic dashboard that has the budget, the project health, how much has been expended. It does match with the amount that was re-appropriated and presented to you all in the agenda session and in infrastructure. And then you can see project health, and then let me scroll down some. And then it has a breakdown of the different CIP projects by status. So one thing that Amanda and her team did during this process is they identified all of the various steps in our capital improvement projects. And Amanda, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it is 21 different steps so that we can have that granular level of detail to be able to report where our projects are. So with this, we will be taking and looking at where things are. You can see many of the projects are in a scoping phase. We do have 11% of the projects that have reached substantial completion, and then the others are in various different forms. We will be using this to see which projects will be in a contract phase in this fiscal year and bringing back anything that we need to move if we need to. And I can answer any questions. Oh, and I have also been working with ITS on what a public-facing version of this is. If given the approval or feedback to move forward, we can take a look with this with M&amp;R and other projects as well for our project management dashboard. And there's one more thing with the manager's permission.
Yes.
Okay. No, it's not in the broadcast views. Okay, never mind. On the internal views, there is a llama farm where your projects show up as llamas, and they are green if they are on track, and they're dancing, and it's fun. But that would, as you would see, not be in the public view.
County Manager.
Yes, I would also like to thank Faith, Deborah Shaw, Amanda and her team, and Jeremy Stefancos, Jeremy Left. They worked diligently and hard to make sure that we got this, not only the project health, but also the dashboard and the timeline so we can present it to you all, and so you can have the information that you need moving forward. Thank you all.
And so, Assistant County Manager Phillips, the public facing is not online, and when will that be brought online?
We can bring it online soon. We are working through that and what it would look like. We've got a few final adjustments to make, and then with your direction and approval, we can move forward with that. ITS has already scoped that for me.
I think it's well within the county manager's prerogative to move forward as he sees fit on the day-to-day operational side. I would just ask that, as we get ready to move it forward, I know we'll communicate that out, because it speaks to the transparency and accountability of this body and of this county government. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? I know Commissioner Patel is smiling over here very I know Commissioner Patel is smiling over here very long, very big. I think he has a comment.
I was just so happy, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is great. I thank you to the Shaw, thank you, ACM, Phillips, and Ms. Lee. I think this will help a lot internally, and then more importantly, to the public, to let them know we're transparent, where their tax money is being spent. And I like the llama thing, too.
It's fun, I'll have to.
Vice Chairman Jones, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great job to the manager and Faith and the entire team. I just have one request. I know that it hasn't rolled out to the public yet, but I would just like to see the viewing, if the board could see that of what the public will view and what they'll see prior, before it goes out to the public.
Yes, ma'am, we can absolutely do that, and the dashboard that you're actually seeing here is a public view, so it'll look something very similar to this.
Commissioners, other questions or comments? County Manager, anything else?
Nothing else. Chairman DeBiere.
All right, we'll go ahead and move to, there is no closed session, so we'll move through that, and hearing no other business become before this body, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion, a quick motion to approve, to adjourn that's properly seconded. All in favor, raise your right hand or say aye.
Aye.
And we're adjourned.